As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. I'd like to ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we give you thanks for the many blessings of this day. And we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. For it's in your great name we pray. Amen. All right. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make an adjustment to the agenda. I would like to move old business to after administrative items and before introductions and special presentations.
All right, so item seven A under old business will now be moved to just before item five, introduction and special presentations.
Thank you.
Any others?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to add item five D, the Juneteenth proclamation, as well as item nine D under staff reports regarding the Valkyrie sculpture.
All right. Any others? All right, I duly have that noted on our agenda and I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Move we approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is item seven A, which is under old business, country lane, conditional rezoning, district request 2021-20CZM located on country lane northeast of Jasper Drive.
Good evening, council members. I'll keep this presentation short as you've seen it a few times now, but just wanted to go over primarily some new information. So again, this is a country lane conditional rezoning request. The biggest change to the overall master plan is identified here with the yellow circle and red arrow. Otherwise, the master plan is pretty similar to what you've seen before, but this is showing where they have merged the two stormwater ponds that were previously in that area into one larger stormwater pond. Again, just reminding you of your considerations for approving or making an action, making an action on this item, whether it's approving or denying or changing it. And then just a reminder of the recommendation, of the recommendation staff as recommending approval, subject to the thirty-three recommended conditions of approval. One additional condition has been added. And you've heard the planning board recommendation at previous meetings, and that has not changed. Recommendation, recommended conditions of approval are here. I'll just, you've heard these a couple of times, so I'm just going to go through the ones that have changed. So the first five are the same that you saw previously. Condition eight has been modified, as you see in red underlined there. Again, just a little bit of additional information and explanation in that, in that condition, including potential enhanced erosion control measures. Conditions twelve through fifteen remain the same as due sixteen through nineteen. Condition twenty has been modified to just state that a minimum of fifteen percent of the total homes shall include masonry features on the front facades. And again, this modification was made because they have reduced the number of units and they're, at this point, are not certain that they may even be able to get to two hundred and seventy units. So again, it would just require the, a total of fifteen percent. Conditions twenty-one, twenty-two have not changed. Twenty-three through twenty-five remain unchanged. Condition twenty-six was modified, again, because of the change in the number of units, to require a minimum of one parking space per ten residential lots be provided as off-street overflow parking spaces. Next, the next condition is a new condition, number thirty-two, and that is that the development shall install tree protection fencing around each of the two trees identified as bent trees and as shown in the tree report prepared by Travis Howell, registered forester, to protect the critical root zone at one foot per one inch of caliper at DBH, which is diameter breast height. Clearing and ground disturbance shall not impact the area enclosed by the tree protection fencing. Then the last condition remains the same as does the statement of consistency and reasonableness. And the applicant also, the applicant's representatives are also here if you have any questions for them tonight.
All right. Thank you, Ben. I'll turn it over to council for discussion. Ms. Archer?
I do have some comments. I know this has been a long road for council and the applicant and all the residents who are here this evening. So I just wanted to say that I do support the conditional rezoning in its current form. And I did want to acknowledge to all the different parties affected by this decision here tonight, what went into my thinking. We have the landowner and the applicant who have followed the rules in our code and altered the plan to address concerns. For them tonight is the culmination of, sorry, I believe, a couple of years of effort, expense and compromise. Also here tonight are the people who live in the residential areas adjacent to and surrounding the development. Some of those are in favor of the plan and some are not. For those who are not in favor, they have legitimate concerns about flooding and erosion, the preservation of sacred Native American sites, and maintaining the environmental quality of the area. For those who saw our two previous council meetings when this plan was discussed, you know that council member Sims talked a bit about the fact that a town council has no legal authority regarding the preservation of Native American sites. We also discussed how the density of this development is aligned with our town's comprehensive growth plan, as well as meets the standards for preservation of open space. We voiced many concerns as a council and looked for solutions, and the applicant has made concessions. Ultimately, for me, the plan that we're looking at tonight represents the most balanced outcome for all those parties involved. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else? Questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to approve with conditions the country lane conditional zoning district request 2021-20-CZM.
A second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the conditional rezoning district request 2021-20CZM. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I would like to amend my motion to include the statement of consistency and reasonableness.
You good with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
No.
Motion carries. All right, up next, I believe, will be a, a motion to approve wastewater resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve with conditions the country lane, sorry, wastewater resolution. Sorry, is there a number that goes along with that, or do I just need to say that? Think wastewater resolution.
Not sure if there's a number, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
It's twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six.
Twenty-two dash twenty-six. But the, the resolution number?
Oh. My apologies. Did I jump the gun? Was there a presentation?
Twenty twenty-two twenty-six is the resolution. There should be that. I, I do have the slides, very similar as I had conveyed at the last meeting. So I'm happy to share those, or if you guys are comfortable, either way, I'll leave it to council.
Yeah, I think that we, it's, nothing has changed substantially for that, that. So at this point, I would like to continue on with my motion then. Sorry for the confusion. So that would be a motion to approve with conditions twenty twenty-two twenty-six wastewater allocation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of the wastewater allocation. Is there any further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sign?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, up next is introductions and special presentations. We're going to begin with the commuter rail presentation. Patrick Pierce.
Mayor, council, good evening. I'm Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. I'm just going to give a quick bio of our, our speaker day. We are joined by Charles, Charles Latuca, who's the president and chief executive officer for Go Triangle. As you know, the region's been looking at commuter rail for several years now, and they're wrapping up a regional feasibility study. And some of those kind of preliminary results and some of kind of the path forward. Charles is here to give us an update on that and kind of look, look forward. Just a little bit about him, because you all may not have had a chance to meet him. He began at Go Triangle in April of 2020 as president and CEO. He comes with more than twenty-five years of experience in transportation management, project, project development, and public policy and strategic planning. So he's done work at the Maryland Transit Administration and also worked in the Washington DC area and around Baltimore and New York State. So lots of different experience around the country and the, the east coast on transit systems. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to him to give a quick presentation and take any questions that you all may have about this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. A pleasure to be here tonight. Yes, I've been here since 2020, April. I moved with my mask on from Maryland to North Carolina. And glad to be out here without a mask, talking to you all today and talk about where we are with the feasibility study. It's, we've been working on it. We had a phase one that took about a year, and then two years ago, we started phase two. We're getting toward the end of that, and it's a good time to be here, talking to you tonight, give you an update, and also what we're planning to do next. So you'll see here on the screen, this is corridor, the corridor from West Durham to Clayton is about forty-three miles. When we started the study, we were looking at thirty-seven mile corridor to Garner and to West Durham. And then Johnston County wanted to become part of the study, so we were happy to accommodate that and, and took the study out to Clayton. And I think it's, I'm really glad we did, we, you know, we'll, we'll be able to tell you later when our study is done, that the ridership will show that we'll have probably four thousand boardings a day from Clayton or any place close to Clayton that we get to with the project. Our study partners are the Campo and DCHC, the MPOs. Of course, the counties, Johnson, Wake and Durham, North Carolina Railroad, probably our most important partner, partner here because they're, they own the corridor, which we want to build the commuter rail, and they've been a great partner to the project. And of course, NC DOT has been our partner and, and advising us along the way. And everybody here has been working monthly meetings amongst the partners. We have a PMC group set up that, that talks about where we are on the project on a monthly basis. And then quarterly, we meet with all the municipalities. And we've gotten a lot of great feedback through this partnership. So as I said earlier, North Carolina Railroad owns this corridor. Nothing happens unless we get in there. It was a great corridor, right? It runs, it's been serving the state since, probably in operation since the eighteen fifties. And it's, now we have a chance to maximize, I feel maximize, the potential for this corridor to add a new service on top of the freight service you have by NS and also the Amtrak service and to put in there and build out a commuter rail service that can serve the growth in the, in the region as we, as the years move on and this region grows. And as I want to tell you, Johnston County is the fastest growing county in the state. Not far behind is Wake and Durham. So, you know, I come from Rochester, New York, and I have to tell you, there is no growth there. And it is, matter of fact, everybody tells me, I can't find a doctor in Rochester. And I said, well, it's because they all moved to North Carolina because they're down here now. And it is, it is kind of true, right? You know, up in northeast and the older communities, Rust Belt communities, you have all this growth happening down here. A lot of folks are moving down here. A lot of every, just about every month, there's an announcement of somebody coming here. I just heard that Metta's coming to Durham. This is a Facebook affiliated company. And then, you know, of course, Apple was a big announcement, and that really had a great impact on, on the community, on home prices and everything else. So, so we're going to use this corridor. We've been studying the capacity of the corridor and working with Norfolk Southern and NCRR to see what fits. Okay, it's one track through here, right? But it's two hundred feet wide in most places. And in places in Durham, it's a lot less because it's in the urban area. But for a lot of places, it's two hundred feet wide, so you can add a lot of extra tracks, so there's a lot of potential for this corridor. Where we are now, what we've been doing, we've been looking at all the stops. We have fifteen stops that we're looking at and what the schedule might be. We're looking at what the infrastructure is going to be. There's a lot of challenges in this corridor. Now, you drive along this corridor probably every day, and you probably say, well, it's a single track. You know, how complicated can it be? But it does get complicated in some spots, especially when you get into Raleigh, even Cary, because Cary has a lot of buildup and it's, and it's around its train station and a lot of at-grade crossings. So you pull a train into Cary a few times a day, and you're backing up the traffic quite a bit. Durham obviously is very complex, and there's the impact on the freight service. So the impacts, East Durham Yard, Selma Yard, certainly, and even places outside the forty-three mile corridor, you know, when you put a lot of trains in the one segment, it pushes things out a little bit, and you have to consider other impacts even outside the corridor. So Norfolk Southern has been telling us what their needs are in order to accommodate an extra forty trains a day. And so far, I think we have some solutions to make it fit, and that's been really good. We've been doing the ridership modeling. Ridership is looking very robust right now. When we come out with our final report, you're going to see on the eight-two-eight-two schedule, meaning eight trains in the morning each direction and two in the midday, eight in the evening and two in, excuse me, eight in the afternoon and two in the evening, you're going to see probably twelve thousand by twenty forty. Now, if we, we're going to study a little bit more of a variable schedule, kind of as a supplement to the study we're doing right now. We've heard a lot of folks say, hey, COVID hit, work patterns have changed, we need to be responsive to that. So we are looking at other types of scenarios where we run a more of an all-day service. So to accommodate those more flexible work schedules that people are having now. And we think that the ridership could go up even a little bit more than the twelve thousand a day, twelve thousand by twenty forty. So a lot to be enthusiastic about and excited about. So we're looking at the housing, the jobs, and all the other impacts that this project would have. And we have some great impacts. We've been talking a little bit about them over the last few months. And when we come out our final report, we want to come back to you and talk about all those impacts, how the access to jobs and housing will happen. We also been here, like, like today, doing public engagement, a lot of public engagement, talking to colleges, all the institutional stakeholders, been the Duke, NCCU, NC State. And, you know, talking to you folks tonight, we've done surveys, focus groups, a lot of engagement. We've done webinars on the stations. We had a station webinar a few months ago that, that probably over six hundred people signed up for it when we first advertised the webinar, which is a lot for a webinar for, you know, kind of a obscure topic. But it was really great, and actually, not, of course, not all six hundred showed up, but you know, around three hundred and fifty showed up, and then ever since then, another five hundred viewed the webinar. So there's a lot of interest. Where's my station? What will it look like? Where will it take me? Stuff like that. So we've been doing that, and I think we're very excited about the, the questions we get and the number of people who are interested. So right now, we're still in the, in the planning stage, as you see the bar on the bottom. And the next step would be preliminary engineering, of course. That requires some decisions to be made before we take that step. And that, those decisions are at the county and the MPO and the Go Triangle Board level. So just a little note about, you know, what type of housing is available near the corridor. So within a mile of either side of the corridor, twenty percent, twenty-seven percent of affordable housing that exists within, exists within the corridor. So that's very good. So we would be connecting people who are using affordable housing. If we can get them to the train station, now there's, not every, not the train station's not going to be within one mile of their home, but it's in the one mile of the corridor. And if we have good transit solutions, get folks at a station, then they'll access all the jobs that are coming in the corridor. And I'll show you those in a minute. Talk a little bit about cost of family budget, right? So what's it cost to have the two most expensive things in your budget is your mortgage and your car? So we know that households that experience forty-five percent or more of that, their money goes into their car and their house are somewhat stressed. And this is the average right here, fifty-seven percent for Durham, fifty-six for Wake, and fifty-three percent for Johnston County. So coming up with a solution, a new transportation alternative might help reduce some of that stress and provide the access to jobs and schools and medical centers. So it's, you know, we really want to make sure that, you know, we give folks choices. Want to talk a little bit about what's the commute pattern like, right? So I'm, I'm probably not telling you, you all anything new, but you know, most of the people who wake up in Johnston County, drive, drive out of Johnston County to go to work. And, you know, not that many drive in, maybe twenty-five thousand and, you know, about twenty-five thousand wake up in Johnston County, work in Johnston County. Now, these are Department of Commerce numbers from twenty eighteen, pre-COVID. So they're a little dated. We are working on some forecasts for what's coming and how the commute patterns might change. So I don't expect to have that information before the end of this month. But when we do have it, we're going to provide it to you, because I think this is a, this is something that, you know, probably should go through your mind as, you know, you, you elected leaders and you talked to the other elected leaders in Johnston County about, you know, how, what's important as far as transportation. Wake is a little bit of a different scenario, right? But again, they would, they would benefit from having another transportation alternative, except their peak is in both directions. So they have, they are a destination for work, and they are also, a lot of people leave Wake to go to work. So it's a peak in both directions, and certainly commuter rail would serve that type of commute too. And Durham is the opposite of Johnston County. More people drive into Durham than leave Durham, you know, in the morning. And so you can see right here, the numbers are quite robust, the number of people need to get to Durham to go to work. You know, we don't know how many of those folks are Johnston County folks, but certainly I'm sure there's a good number. I know, looking from some of the data, I've heard that some people drive into Durham is from, as far as Charlotte. So, you know, it's, it's, it's an interesting picture here when it comes to the commuting patterns. And again, twenty eighteen numbers, but, you know, the, the folks, maybe their commute pattern has changed, but their job location probably hasn't in those last couple of years. But certainly, as we go back to more normal routines, maybe we'll see more of this. But my feeling is that this will change somewhat when we provide the forecasted data for you at the end of the month. This is the slide that really gets me. Okay, so this is the jobs. The job growth between now and twenty twenty and twenty fifty, eight hundred thousand more jobs coming. Each dot is fifty jobs. And you can see Johnston County at the end is, that's the, the green wiggle there is the, is the, is the rail corridor, a mile either side of the rail corridor. And look how many of those jobs are within that mile corridor, of the corridor. We, the, the commuter rail will serve eight of the ten busiest activity centers along the corridor or in the region. You can see the north-south Route One. Look at that. That is, that falls along, you know, where DOT wants to do the S-line work. You know, have that high-speed train coming down from Richmond and maybe have that high-speed train coming down from Richmond and maybe also add a few commuter trains in there too. So there's, it's a lot of growth there. And of course, you know, that RTP to a little bit east of Raleigh, and I don't have the cities up here, so it may be hard to discern, but I think we all know generally where it is, and you can see that's where the densest job growth is. And then, of course, you get to Durham in, in the, in the, in the west, and they have significant job growth. And also to the south of Durham, along that 15501 corridor, going down from Durham down to, into Orange County, they also have a big lump of jobs that are going to come there too. So this is the problem we're trying to solve right now. Does commuter rails solve the whole problem? No. There is other things that we need to do. There's probably going to need to be some more highway expansion. There's going to need to be more bus expansion. If the bus service doesn't exist, the bus system's going to need to be created. And there's going to need to be bus rapid transit systems that are going to be constructed to serve the folks that are not going, on average, like a commuter rail traveler would go 20 miles or more, but, you know, people who take the bus like 10 miles to their job, we want to make sure we're growing those, those, those services too. So there's a lot to do. This region is so successful, is going to be more successful. There are more jobs being shown on this slide than there are people going to be here in 20 years. So that goes, that tells you something too, how many people need to come from outside the region to come to work. So here are the number of people that we expect to be in the region between now and 2040 or so, I should say 2020, 2040. I thought, when I looked at the census data a couple of years ago, the number was 650,000, and maybe many of you recalled that number too, but it's actually now close to 750,000. And we think these folks are going to bring a heck of a lot of cars with them, and it's going to congest our roads even further. So if nothing is done, no commuter rail, no extra bus service, no widening on the highway, this is what we look like here by 2040. And it's not a pretty picture, but certainly it shows the challenges. Now, does commuter rail rub a lot of that red out and turn it to yellow? Probably not, but probably not as, going to be as bad if you have a commuter rail alternative and a good, healthy bus system to serve folks. And you can take a dent out of those extra vehicle miles traveled. You never, you know, reduce the vehicle miles traveled, but you can slow the growth of vehicle miles traveled. And I think that's the, that's the, what we need to be focused on. You know, if we can turn some of that red into yellow, you know, green, I think is, is a reach for now, but certainly, you know, I see a lot of the local roads are still green, but I know where I live, up near Wake Forest, it is really bad getting around. And I spent a week in Wake Med last year, and I got to tell you, a lot of the nursing staff come from this area. You know, Johnston County, Clayton, Wendell, and I'll tell you, they, when they found out what I did, I heard a lot about their commute. So, so anyway, so they did a great job with me, and I got a lot of lessons and information from the nurses and staff at Wake Med about how bad the commute is and how they would love to see something like an expanded commuter rail or a bus service to help them have an alternative that's even more reliable, because, you know, you want to be, you want reliable transportation, you want to get to work on time so you don't lose your job. So I talked a little bit about bus rapid transit. So bus rapid transit, I think, is a key component of what we do grow. We need to build a system, right? So a system that's more than just commuter rail. Now, all of these yellow lines, and there's a lot of segments in here, are, and they're connected, that could be built by 2030. They're on the books to be built. A lot of these are in the Campo plan. One up on the west is Chapel Hill, and that's in the DCHC MPO plan. And they're ready to build if they get the money. I know New Bern Avenue in Wake County is being built now, and the other ones, the other five are going to be on their way here by 2030. So this is what it looks like if it gets built out. Now, is it competitive with commuter rail? I don't think so. I think, again, the, the, the people taking a certain bus line are not going the distances that a commuter rail customer would go. And then you see that segment that comes out to Clayton. Now, the bus rapid transit generally is a bus that runs an exclusive lane, right? So it doesn't run with traffic, it runs around the traffic, and if it gets through an intersection, usually give it a priority signal. So that means that they get to jump on the rest of the traffic by like 10 seconds, and the bus gets to move forward while everybody waits for them to clear out, and then they get to move forward. So bus rapid transit is great. It can move a lot of people, short distance, like 10 miles or less. Most of these segments are less than 10 miles. And most of these segments have exclusive lanes for about 70% of their trip. So, and they're not cheap, bus rapid transit. I used to do bus rapid transit in my varied history, and I'm glad you didn't get to hear all of it, because it's quite boring, but I used to do bus rapid transit, and bus rapid transit does move a lot of people. But it's not cheap. You're looking at 40, $60 million a mile, whereas a train is, you know, obviously a lot more than that. But it is a good service, and I think if there's a chance to invest in bus rapid transit, I, I think it's a good deal. Certainly, the last section out to, what's being talked about right now, out to Clayton from before Garner out this way, would probably not be exclusive lane. It would probably be more like an express bus service, you know, running in, in traffic until it gets closer to Raleigh where it might enter some kind of exclusive lane. But still, would be a huge benefit to Johnston County, especially Clayton. Just want to talk for a minute about some of the stations, what they look like, you know, how do we plan around them? This is Raleigh. We'll have a shared platform at the Raleigh train station with the Amtrak. And then we'll, we'll, that's a quarter mile around the station there, where we would be adjacent to the Amtrak platforms. And it, it goes to show you that you can walk a good bit here. We think a quarter mile, obviously, you know, is, doesn't seem like a lot, but, you know, it's a decent walk, and this is, covers quite a bit of the area of the city that you might want to go to. Certainly Garner, this was what Garner would look like if, at the train station, where we're looking at the location there. It definitely, you know, encompasses a good part of Garner, and of course, you also want good last mile connections, whether it be Uber, Lyft, some kind of shuttle, or fixed route bus, certainly want to have that along there to complement the, the rail transportation. Of course, Clayton, we couldn't draw a circle around Clayton Town because we don't know where the station's going to be, right? So we're still talking about that. I think there's like three different alternatives for a location. Caterpillar showing here, you know, it's not a walk though, we all know that. And, you know, it certainly, we need some kind of rubber tire solution to get folks that, you know, need to get the Caterpillar and other activity centers that are more than a quarter mile from the, from the station. So, but this is just to give you an idea of, you know, how things might look in the future when we talk about stations. This is the dream, so I think this is everything, right? So this is everything plus some. So the orange is the commuter rail corridor, the blue is the north-south corridor that NC DOT is working on, and they would love to run a couple in what they call inner-city trains, they're not calling it commuter, you know, between Henderson and Sanford, a few trips a day. And then the BRTs are in there, they're purple, purplish. They're hard to see because they are shorter segments, and they do run fairly parallel to some of the other corridors. And then the green lines are the GO Triangle routes that connect to, to the stations. So we don't go to RDU. RDU is a dotted line. We need some kind of people mover to get people from the train station in Morrisville to RDU. It's about three miles. And I would suggest that to serve more of Johnston County, because I think you probably, you know, if you're going to do something in Johnston County, you want to include more of Johnston County than just Clayton. I think, you know, whoever is our operator, you could develop a rubber tire solution. It's only 22 minutes by vehicle, by roadway to get between Selma and Clayton. So I think some kind of bus shuttle that is timed to the train movements would be good, and, you know, would maybe with a parking facility in Selma also to get more folks into the train at Clayton and serve more of Johnston County. But typically, I would say, around the country, that people will drive as far as 10 miles to go and park at a commuter rail station in order to catch the train. So, so I think already Clayton does. If you drew a 10-mile circle around Clayton, would serve a lot of Johnston County, but I think taking something to Selma might be, might be interesting too. And I see a Phase 2 down the road if we were to build this and then expand upon it, I think Selma would be a good candidate to extend to. And then, of course, on the west end, Meben has told us that they really want to see a train out to Meben. So that would be like the Phase 2 if that was to happen. So the last slide here, and then I'll be able to take some questions. What happens next? Okay, so we finished the study. We're going to give a final draft to our project partners to take a look at this month. In July, we'll take the comments and fine-tune it. And then late, late July, early August, we'll have a final of the feasibility study, which folks can, will give to you and, and make public, and people can comment on it. And I think we'll be, I'll be back talking to you about all the details of the study and answer all the questions that you may have related to the study. But of course, you know, we need the counties to make some decisions, right? So the county commissioners, nothing moves forward without their, their instruction and their approval, and then the MPOs have to approve it, and then GO Triangle Board will approve it. Early as possible start date, and I think this is, you know, the longer we wind up talking about the feasibility study or however long it takes to make a decision, will impact this date. But, you know, you could envision a 2025 start date and maybe a late 2030 revenue service date. Certainly, that would be a great goal to have, and I think it's a good goal to have now to keep project moving. But we'll see when folks make their decision, if they make their decisions to move into development, and once you take it into development, then you got to kind of spend some real money. And then with FTA, if you're using the FTA process in order to move this thing through the new starts program, which is the federal program which would fund this project. So we see this as 50/50 split between the local governments and the federal government. And you're talking price tag north of $2 billion, but, but we need to finish the study and get folks talking about if the costs and benefits are, you know, the right way, are right, and there's enough benefits to move forward. So that's my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Questions or comments? Good. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, and you too. Thank you. Up next is the recognition of utility maintenance mechanics to Dylan Carroll and Jack Keier for passing the National Association of Sewer Service Companies in a SSCO certification program. Mr. Blalock.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, ridge, staff. Well, apologize, Starwood, I normally prepare better for this, but, you know, this is a lot for what these two young men do, did. It's, it's my honor tonight to recognize them for what they did. Mr. Dylan Carroll and Jake Keier, as you stated, they did, they sat at the end of April in a three-day online class and passed not one, but three certification exams to receive their NASCO certification in MACP, PACP, and LACP. What that is, is MACP is Manhole Assessment Certification Program. LACP is Lateral Assessment Certification Program, and PACP is Pipeline Assessment Certification Program. Why is this important? Well, at the beginning of this fiscal year, we purchased a software for our camera system that we use to video our collection system. This software allows us to get reports to make sure all the data is consistent throughout the industry. There's engineering firms that are certified in that. There are trenchless repairs like we did on Main Street. Them companies can take the video that we give them and know without a shadow of doubt that it was done properly with the same coding that they used to do it themselves. These two are two of three employees in the town that are certified, and I'm proud to say that those three are in my department. So as water and sewer employees, we want to thank you for allowing us to get this new technology that's out there for us to better utilize and to assess and make better decisions for when we get Joshua involved to replace lines that are in the town. These guys and the other guys in the water, I've always said it, ever since I've had an opportunity to be in front of you, is that you have the best water and sewer employees in, in the state. These guys want to utilize new technology and learn more about their jobs to better serve the customers and residents of the town. So thank you. Appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Congratulations. Much appreciated. All right, up next is employee introduction. Mr. Capola.
Hi, John Mack to come on up. Mayor and council, this has been many months in the making here, but with the previous budget, it was approved to add a new information systems director to be able to take on the task of understanding our IT needs throughout the town and really looking at what we can do to upgrade our infrastructure. After a long search, we are fortunate to have found John Mack, who stands here before you. John started a couple of weeks ago and still continues to show up, so we're very happy about that. John has lived in the area since about 2007. Has been in the IT business for just about 20 years, public sector and private sector. Biggest thing that stuck out to us is he spent 10 years with the town of Garner with their information technology department, so really understands the business of what we do as a local government right out of the gate. He's also got a very extensive background in security, most recently working with Verizon Business Solutions in that realm. So that's something that is very critical to our operations, and we are very excited to have him onboard with that skillset. When he's not here, he's hanging out with his wife and his two kids here in the area. He's a very active member of some of our sports leagues here in town. But I can say for myself, but also for pretty much everybody that's had an opportunity to meet him so far the last few weeks, we are very excited to have John here onboard and looking forward to what he can bring forward with some, some changes to our IT infrastructure. John?
I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity, and I, I look forward to working with everybody. I'm excited to, to use my skillset to help Garner in any, or Clayton, sorry, I said Garner, you got to forgive me. Clayton in any way I can, sorry. I, I worked there for 10 years, so you got to forgive me.
We totally forgive you. How about that? We're, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Here at the town.
Glad to be here.
Very much. Mr. Thompson.
I, you know, sitting on this council longer than the others, I, I just want to say, this is a vision in my 10 years on the council, that we've had the vision for every one of those 10 years to have you, have someone in this position managing our IT needs. You know, for many years, it's, it's always been contracted out, and we, we've, I, I just don't know the, this is such a significant event to hire you, and the, the vision of what we're going to be able to do with our own infrastructure and not spending taxpayer dollars to outside firms managing equipment that we don't even own. This is big for the taxpayers, this is big for the citizens, that, that we're going to have you in this position to, and, and to be able to develop a program yourself from its infancy, you know, that's pretty exciting. So we're glad you're here, because I can tell you, in the 10 years I've been on this council, for all 10 of those years, we've wanted this.
Excellent. I'm excited.
How are your arms? Because I heard it took a little bit of arm twisting, and, and I told Rich, you know, Rich said, we, we found the right guy, we just got to get him to say yes to Clayton. So he did find the right guy, and we're very glad that you joined our team.
Appreciate it.
We thank you.
And I thank you guys and gals. Thank you very much.
And as Rich said, thanks for coming back to work every day.
I'll, I'll keep coming.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
All right, up next is the Juneteenth proclamation. Town of Clayton proclaim, proclaiming June 19th, 2022 as Juneteenth. Whereas our country is made up of people from every nation on earth, we are, who are declared equal, not only in freedom, but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy human civilization. And whereas our nation was conceived on July 4th, 1776, with the Declaration of Independence, the classic statement being, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that all are endowed by the Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And whereas in 2007, North Carolina became the 26th state to recognize Juneteenth as a state holiday, and whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed into law a bill that made Juneteenth or June 19th the nation's 12th federal holiday. Now therefore, on behalf of the Town of Clayton, I, Jody McLeod, Mayor of the Town of Clayton, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2022 as Juneteenth in Clayton duly proclaimed the sixth day of June 2022. We encourage all of our citizens to celebrate that day, if you'll pass that to the board. All right, moving on, up next is our public hearing. The first public hearing is a public hearing for text amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 151 Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, Joshua Baird, Engineering Director. I'm here filling in for Susan Locklear, Stormwater Engineer tonight. The item before you is really an administrative item related to our flood damage prevention ordinance. Last time it was adopted back in 2018 when Johnston County released new maps. So it's basically, the update before you tonight is two items. One is related to the 160D legislation. We went through a lot in terms of planning and really the section in terms of authorization and allowing the town to administer a floodplain ordinance is tied to that. So there's some language just in terms of authorization that is tied to the 160D updates from a year or two ago. The second is actually related to the map. So back in 2018, when the ordinance was updated, FEMA and the state had just gone through an update exercise to the maps redoing, looking at the areas, remodeling everything. And the maps for Johnston County were updated at that time. We then updated our ordinance to reflect that. The, the, the way these firm maps are, is they're not, they don't line exactly with the counties, they're square maps. And so you do have some overlap between Johnston County and Wake County. On January 19th of this year, FEMA issued a letter of final determination for Wake County. So now Wake County's maps are updated and because they're, some of the panels overlap with Town of Clayton jurisdiction, we now have to just effectively have a new date for those panels that also have Wake County information on them. In terms of the actual analysis, the floodplain areas, nothing has changed for property owners in terms of Johnston County. The actual flood, the boundaries, the, the areas are still the same, the models are still the same for Johnston County. We're just asking you tonight to adopt a new date for those maps that overlap with Wake County now that that final issue or the issuance of determination for Wake County has been issued. I do want to bring one additional item to your attention. In your packet, the, the ordinance was updated to effectively show all of Johnston County having a new date of July 19th, 2022. I would like to ask that we amend that tonight such that the maps associated with Johnston County still remain the effective date of June 20th, 2018. And it's, we're only modifying the maps that overlap with Wake County to the new date of January 19th, 2022. So again, this is a, is different from what is in your packet. The change here is just the maps that overlap Wake County changing and updating the date. For everything else in Johnston County will remain the 2018 date back when the ordinance was updated for the rest of Johnston County. So with that, this has been noted as a public hearing because it is a change to the ordinance. The item has been properly noticed and I will take any questions that you may have.
All right, any questions for staff? All right, being done, this has been noted as a public hearing. So I'll now open the public hearing and anyone who wishes to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their discussion. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the text amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 151 Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance and to reflect the dates proposed by staff with the updated dates.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is a public hearing, 2021-153 CZM for Grifols West Campus Development for requested zone change from heavy industry I-2 to conditional zoning industry CZI.
All right, good evening, council. Just going to adjust this really quickly. My name is Erin Pritchard. I'm a planner two. Coming to you today with a, another conditional zoning item for Grifols West Campus Development. This went through the planning board on April, I think the date was 25th. The request is to rezone about 373 acres. It's currently zoned I-2 and the request is to rezone it to conditional zoning industrial. Up on your screen there, you can see just a few project details. So at, at this time, there's only two phases that are planned for construction, phases one and two. They comprise approximately 360,000 square feet. The entirety of the west campus, once it's all said and done, Grifols predicts about 10 million square feet, or sorry, up to 10 million square feet. There is a 100 foot wide development buffer that it goes along the northeast perimeter adjacent to the single family residential, which you can see there on the aerial map. This is just a master plan which was put together by McGill, the applicant who is representing Grifols. As you can see there, the phases one and two are concentrated down at the southern part of the, of the development adjacent to the railroad right of way. The 100 foot wide development buffer, as well as some wetlands, protected wetlands and streams there, you can see on the northeast portion. This is just a bit more development data. As I mentioned, up to 10 million square feet. That number may never be arrived at, but seeing as how this is a, basically a brand new zoning district, that number was just mentioned. Let's see. So it's worth pointing out that the only difference in terms of dimensional standards between this conditional zoning district and the existing I-2 district is that maximum building height. As you can see there, it's 150 feet. I-2 has a maximum building height of 50 feet. And that was really the impetus for coming through with a conditional zoning district rather than having, having Grifols come in for each individual building and requesting a variance because there may be several buildings on the site. And my understanding is that due to some sort of industrial process involved with producing the pharmaceuticals, they require taller buildings. So that's the, the reason for that. Quickly, so the one thing to mention, I bolded it there on the screen. They're still working with engineering to finalize wastewater allocation for phases one and two. So any decision tonight of you choose to approve or deny, it would not take into account wastewater. So if you chose to approve, they would need to come back in to get wastewater allocation approval separately. As I mentioned, the 100 foot development buffer, so there are a few uses that would be allowed, however, they would all be fairly low impact, very little disturbance allowed. So our code has seven distinct criteria for approving and evaluating conditional zoning districts. I won't go into each individual one and I apologize if this is a bit wordy on the screen for each slide, but it's all contained in your staff report. So obviously consistency with adopted plans and policies, particularly the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan, suitability of the subject property for the proposed zoning, whether or not it improves the balance of uses and meets specific demand in the town. Capacity of adequate public facilities and services. Legal purposes of zoning, ensuring that they are not contravened. So that kind of speaks to spot zoning in particular. With this being such a large site and given that really it's remaining industrial, staff does not feel that this is spot zoning. The last two are just that no adverse effect would occur to adjoining property owners. Again, that's where that 100 foot buffer comes into play. To the east and west, if I go back a few slides, you could see that large portions of adjacent parcels are also zoned I-2 and I-1. So there is a lot of compatibility there. And finally, no one property owner or small group will benefit to the detriment of the general public. Staff feels that with the imposed conditions, it should take care of that. Separate to that, the code also contains approval criteria for the master plan. Again, I won't read each one of these, but you can consult the packet for more detail. Specific to you as the town council, this is taken from the code. There are a few considerations, just to remind you, for conditional zoning districts. First off, the code states that you shall consider the recommendation of planning board and staff. Depending on your decision, you also will need to approve a written statement adopting the action and having it speak to consistency with adopted plans and policies and whether it is reasonable and in the public interest. The conditional zoning district, master plan and narrative will all be recorded with the county and will run with the land. So should the property change hands in the future, this will still remain valid. And then finally, you may revise, add, or remove any conditions. I should mention that we did recommend 10 conditions and the applicant did sign those and get that back to us. And here are those 10 conditions. Again, I won't read each one, but you'll find those in the packet. There was one change I should point out between planning board and town council. We were hoping that engineering and Grifols could come to an agreement for wastewater allocation for phases one and two. However, that's still pending. So I amended condition number nine there slightly. I believe for planning board, it said something like wastewater allocation for phases beyond one and two would be required prior, prior to site plan approval. I just changed it to say that any wastewater allocation for any phase will be required prior to site plan approval. As I mentioned, planning board did recommend approval subject to the 10 recommended conditions. Staff, in addition to that, is also recommending approval subject to the 10 recommended conditions. And for that consistency and reasonableness statement, instead of putting it here on the slide, today I worked with our wonderful interim clerk, Sherry Scoggins, shout out to her, to amend and add the statement as section five in the ordinance. So when you do approve the ordinance, it will be listed there. So that's it for me. Happy to answer any questions. And the applicant is also here as well to answer any questions that you might have, so.
All right, questions or comments for staff? All right, thank you, sir. So this has been noted as a public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their discussion. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve with conditions 2021-153 CZM for Grifols West Campus Development and to approve the statement of consistency and reasonableness included in the packet.
A second.
We have a motion and a second for approval with conditions. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is a public hearing to consider revising the electric rate and water and sewer rates for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rich Capola, interim town manager. I'll be filling in for Craig Brown this evening to provide the electric rate financial analysis. Some of this information you may recall from our previous work sessions regarding the FY23 budget and the subsequent water and sewer, as well as electric rate model updates that are done on an annual basis. This slide should be familiar to you from those previous discussions. Essentially, this is the process that is filled, done for both electric as well as water and sewer annually to be able to reset our rates for our rate users, for our customers. Step one is the financial planning that is done every year. That's an update to the analysis to put in the inputs. So, you know, everything from salaries and benefits to capital investment project, excuse me, capital projects that are needed to be funded through that fiscal year. When that analysis is done, it determines whether or not the current rates are feasible to be able to continue funding that package or in some cases, we have to go to what is step three, which would then be a rate design to be able to generate the revenue necessary to provide for the expenditures that are projected. The middle section there, step two, the cost of service, that's something that we do typically about every five years. So for electric rates, for instance, that's something that as the next fiscal year we would be doing, that essentially reshuffles the desk, the deck with regards to the different user types in our system to make sure that each of those user types are carrying whatever the costs that they generate equally within the rate design. But effectively, this is a pretty standard process that is done every year. Again, the step one is what we do every year regardless of where we're at. And if the, if the necessary expenditures exceed what would be generated from the existing rate design, we then do step three to figure out what those new rates need to be. For this current year, as you can see, we've got several fiscal years noted across the top, starting in 2021, going out to 2026 for projected revenues, excuse me, revenues and expenditures. For FY23, right there in the middle, you can see that the, the beginning balance and annual cash flow based on our current needs would result in less than 100 days of total cash on hand. Total cash on hand is one of the health metrics that we look at when we're looking at the electric utility to understand whether or not we do have available funds to be able to weather the storm if and when those things that we are unforeseen come up. It's an industry standard for that to be kind of reviewed annually with regards to the revenues. And that's where the town does have a goal for 100 days cash on hand for that metric. In addition, we have our debt service coverage ratio. That is a goal or a minimum of 1.5 typically. As you can see in FY23, given our current rates, as they sit today, we would not generate, excuse me, we would, we would be below the 1.5 minimum that is, is the industry standard that we are trying to hold. Really, the pressures that are being placed on us this year are some of the ones that are across the board with, with all of our budgets this year. Increased and expanded staffing costs, the cost of the people, you know, certainly keeping an operation like an electric utility going is a 24 hour a day business. I feel like we've got some of the best in the business working for us. We want to make sure that that remains. So we've been, been very diligent in maintaining those staff as well as building out that the, the future of those, you know, the linemen and the other crew leaders that are necessary to, to grow as we grow as a utility. And in addition to that, the increased system maintenance and repair costs, as you'll see in a presentation later today from Mr. Mackay, the costs of everything that we do these days is going up. Electric utilities are no, no different, unfortunately. All the things that are necessary, whether it's people, materials, equipment, the cost of everything right now is, is going up. In some cases, like for instance, and with regards to some of our capital projects exponentially in comparison to what is kind of the normal CPI. So in addition to our normal maintenance repair costs, the growing capital project needs are really putting some pressure on needing to be able to generate additional revenue to cover those projects. Right now, the existing system has some reconductoring needs that need to happen to make sure that we have a reliable and redundant system, as well as just the growth projects in general that, that are kind of normal course of day. The cost to deliver those projects is going up on regular, you know, on a daily basis at this point. So being able to maintain the revenues necessary to generate or to, to deliver those projects and to keep delivering the reliable service that we have are putting some pressure on the overall rates and the, and the utility. As such, based on the, the analysis from the rate, rate consultant, this year, they're recommending a 7% increase to approximately 7% across, 7% average increase across the entire utility. As you can see here, that 7% increase would get us up above that 100 days cash on hand right now projected at approximately 115 days, as well as it would increase our debt, debt coverage ratio to 2.55 from the previous 0.67. That would have been if we held the current standards, excuse me, held the current rates as of today. Do want to note that years 24 and 25, as of right now, the rate model is projecting additional increases needed in future years. State of North Carolina, this council does not make that decision this evening. You do not bind one council more than a year. So really, we are focusing on the FY23 rate of 7% average increase. But I do want to make sure that it is, you are aware that as of right now, the rate model and the future cost projections that we are looking at are indicating that additional increases may be required over the next six months to eight months before we start really getting into the next year's budget cycle. We're going to be looking at retooling the CIP for the electric utility, as well as looking for any other efficiencies that we could possibly generate to try to hopefully bring those, those rate impacts down. But unfortunately for this year, there is a real need to be able to cover our costs to deliver the service. In terms of the typical residentially monthly bill. In terms of the typical residential monthly bill, you can see in the bottom blue box there, typical Clayton resident uses approximately 966 kilowatt hours per month, or about 32 per day. Based on that, the average increase of the 7%, like we talked about, it results in approximately $9.13 per month bill change at that total 966 units used. So that's approximately the increase that the normal customer from a residential, I say normal, the average customer from a residential standpoint would see after July 1. Do want to note that the typical electric customer's bill is about 28.5 cents per day. So with that, just a summary of the electric rate study. The financial forecast indicates the need for increased fees the next three years. Again, we're focusing on that FY23 as that's what is proposed as part of the 2023 budget proposal. Primary drivers are the increase in the O&M cost, capital plan that supports basically maintaining the infrastructure that we currently have in place, as well as making sure that we are meeting those key industry metrics of 100 days of operating expenses and a minimum of 1.5 debt service ratio. You know, the, you know, looking at this from a staff and from an operating of the utility standpoint, you'll see later today kind of the general CPI increases of 8.5, 8.8%. There's another PCE index that's approximately 6.6. The general cost of all things we see is going up between 6 and 8%. And unfortunately, like I mentioned earlier, when it comes to your electric utility rates, we're seeing that same, that same 7% in this case pressure that's being put on the delivery of that service as well. So with that, I'll open it up to questions and/or it is a public hearing, I believe. So we can handle the electric first. We do have a water and sewer presentation that'll be done by our rate consultants, Black and Beach, that are here to have that. Would you rather hear from them first or would you rather?
I think we'll just break it down. And any questions or comments for Rich on the electrical part of it? Okay. If not, we'll do the second part of the presentation and then we'll open up the whole public hearing for comments on both.
With that, I'm going to turn it over to Robert and Praba from Black and Beach. They've been doing our water rate study since it was started approximately five years ago. And I'll let them update you here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's really a pleasure for us to be back here to discuss the water and sewer rate study. We were here a few weeks ago to give you a kind of an overview of the study and the approach and the preliminary findings. Today, we are here to talk a little bit more about it, to really give you the kind of the findings of the final proposed recommendations that we have based on our study analysis. What we're going to discuss really quickly here is again, the study purpose. We are going to give you a quick overview of the industry perspective, some of which we did discuss last time, and really then talk about rate mitigation strategies. And then we're going to talk about the financial plan itself, really the objectives that this financial plan was designed to achieve, talk a little bit specifically about the capital program and the funding, and then some of the O&M expenditures and the needs, and then bring it all together in terms of what does the financial plan forecast look like for the next six years. The study period in this particular financial plan is fiscal year 23 through 28. In terms of the purpose of the study, this is really a best practice that the town of Clayton has adopted in terms of really getting an independent entity to come and do an independent study on the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, so that we could then forecast a multi-year financial plan. And the benefit of the multi-year financial plan is it gives you a lens into what does the next six years look like in terms of the revenue requirements, the size of the pie the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund needs to keep the utility in a mode of resilience. And then the next step in the process then is to then say, how do we then recover this pie that is needed? And really from the various customer classes, because the nature of the services that the customer classes demand are different between residential, commercial, industrial. So really doing a cost of service analysis to make sure that we collect the revenues in the appropriate way. And then designing, last part is designing a rate structure where we then design the rates to recover the revenues. The ultimate goal is to really have what we call a reasonable nexus between the service demands that the customers place on the system and what it actually costs to provide the service to them. So before we dive into the town's specific needs and the town's specific plans, a quick recap on what are the big issues that water and wastewater utilities in the country are facing. The reason we present this is to again show that what the town is facing today is kind of very consistent with what the nation is facing in terms of water and sewer utilities. So you're not entirely alone. It's just the flavors vary from place to place depending on the geography. The key thing that really keeps utility managers and leaders like you really focused on what is needed. Number one is aging infrastructure. In many places, it's aging infrastructure, but for a town like Clayton, it's not only aging infrastructure, but you also have significant growth. So you have to have the necessary infrastructure addressed for both of those reasons. And obviously, that adds to the layer of costs that we need to address. But on the other side of the fence, then we have the revenue pressures as well, because while conservation, sustainability, they are all good things, with increasing good fixtures that are water sense fixtures that you have, it also poses a challenge in terms of revenues, because a lot of our revenues are dependent on volume of water usage. And when people conserve, which is a good thing, it also imposes a revenue challenge for the utility. So the utility faces two pressures. On the one hand, costs. On the other hand, revenues. And while this is happening from a utility perspective, and you look at the public, and you look at the rate payers, in the country, there is still a challenge in really educating the rate payers on what's the service that they get for the money that they pay. That understanding is still lagging behind, because there is still a perception that water is a fundamental right, and so we should just have it. But they have to understand that it does come with a cost, because it takes a lot of effort and energy to produce that safe water and deliver it to the customers and dispose of the wastewater. So that understanding gap, nationally, we are still all trying to work together on that, but more work is needed to really educate the customers to understand what it takes to deliver water service. And the fourth important aspect is of course, increasing cost. You just heard in the previous presentation, Mr. Capola explaining on the electric side. We'll talk about it on the water sewer side. And all of this comes at the same time when we are talking about climate change and the need for greater resilience for all unknown climate change issues that affects various parts of the country in various ways. In addition to that, we have the information technology challenge. While this information IT data management is great, it also comes with issues of cybersecurity. And it's awesome that now you're going to have an IT director to help handle all of those things. And last but not least, really the workforce. All of this can happen only with skilled and effective workforce, and that continues to be a challenge nationally. Coming to the town now, coming to our local environment here, what are your drivers in terms of the water sewer issues that we are in front of you today? Really, we can put it under four categories for this 23 through 28 financial plan. Number one is the water reclamation facility, the wastewater treatment facility project cost. As you're all aware, that cost is really increasing. It's a significant cost in the short term, and that has a big impact on the financial plan we're going to present today. And how is then, what are we doing to mitigate that impact? We are really trying very hard, and really, the township leadership is really trying very hard to utilize a variety of funding resources, including revenue bonds, including state revolving fund loans, working with the LGC, and really trying for state grants, so that collectively, when you put it all together, we can try to get the lowest possible cost for financing that big project. And coupled with that is really what is happening at the current time in the market. While this big project is there that you all have to deal with, there is also the market conditions where because of supply chain and other issues, cost is going up, not only on the capital project cost side, but also on the O&M cost side. So specifically with this water reclamation facility project, really the township leadership is doing the necessary due diligence in reviewing those costs again, trying to get some independent review to make sure that the costs that you're going to be dealing with are as thoroughly vetted and needed for that particular big project. So that due diligence is ongoing. The third category of driver for us right now is the purchased water cost. And the township is reliant on buying purchased water. And so that cost is also going up. And so again, as a strategy to manage that cost, we do have, the township is maintaining the existing contracts, but at the same time, beginning to explore other water supply resources, because that level of resilience is needed, so that you're not relying only on one source of purchased water. On the wastewater side, also the township is relying on purchased wastewater treatment capacity from Raleigh. So that also the township is looking at and just enhance the contract capacity at Raleigh, because again, the growth we talked about, while the water reclamation facility has to be built and commissioned, in the meantime, we need the additional capacity. So the township has done the due diligence of securing that capacity. So these are the four major drivers and the strategies we are bringing to bear in this financial plan, so that the plan we are presenting to you today, we are hoping is a pragmatic plan that you all have, can take some comfort on in taking some decisions. So with that, my colleague is going to walk you through the financial plan.
Thank you, Praba. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for having us again today. Going into the financial plan. So you heard Praba mention revenues and highlighted that, you know, revenues is one of the issues we're dealing with, you are and everybody else in the industry. One of the key fundamental questions become, you know, what is the total revenues for the water and sewer system that you're able to generate? And in generating those revenues, are those revenues sufficient to meet your financial metrics? And also meet it at a point whereby it doesn't overburden the impact to your customers' existing bills, and you appropriately fund your requirements. So these are some of the objectives we've utilized as a part of the financial plan when we go about developing this financial plan. Okay? So going into your capital requirements, I know we've discussed this slide and discussed the requirements, and not to go back into too much details, but as we can tell, as we look at the capital requirement, FY23, 24, the upcoming 23, is going to be the most significant year with wastewater treatment requirements, that big green portion of the FY23 being significant, which we know. And we will see the impact to the financial plan as we go forward. One of the things we wanted to highlight is the fact that through this process, we've always spoken about capital requirements. What are the capital requirements? You know, what's the cost of, you know, the reclamation facility? But that's not the only cost that's going up. That's not the only obligation. You also have O&M costs. You have water O&M that will be going up by about 10% and wastewater O&M as a result of everything that you're doing currently, that will be going up by 18%. So that also plays a role and has a significant part of the mix as it relates to your annual requirements. So getting into the financial plan. And I know this is a lot of information, but I'll gradually walk through it, not too slow, but you know, in an order that we can, you know, look through it and get a basic understanding. So line one through line three highlights the rate increases, the revenues and the associated rate increases that we will see on a per-system basis and a total system basis. So line one, and we're focusing on FY23 to start. Line one is the existing revenues that we're generating. Line two A and two B highlights what is the requirement of each individual system. And line two says, when that bill comes together, what is the aggregate requirement of the entire system, of the entire pie? Line three goes about providing an aggregate. So for each year's rate increase, it sums up the total increase over the forecast period, with the first increase generating about 3.6 million in revenues. You also have other requirements, other revenue dollars, which could be miscellaneous fees, capacity fees, for example, that are part of the mix. Your total estimated revenues for FY23 is about 34.6 million, and that total will grow over the forecast period. Now comes the cost side, lines six through 11. You have O&M costs of 23 are about 15.7, which includes some of those water and wastewater increases we showed in the previous slide. You have existing debt service and proposed debt service. And if you look at line eight for proposed debt service, you see there is a steep increase in the proposed debt service from 24 to 25, which is significant of that big capital requirement we saw in 23, which then indicates when those debt service payments will come in to support that requirement. Then you have other expenditures. Not to belabor this portion, but in FY23, your total system expenses are estimated to be about 30.6 million. And you generate annual operating balance of about 3.9 million. Two of the key metrics we use to, you know, make sure that the system can operate is debt service coverage. That is net revenues over debt service. So how much revenues you have after you've taken care of operating expenses to cover the debt service obligations, and then cash on hand. You know, typically, you know, historically, as it relates to funds on hand, we've seen, you know, metrics of about 120. You know, now more entities are recognizing about 200 days. And even rating agencies are saying, we should really be looking at closer to 360 and over, you know, if the utility is able to do it. You know, given your current situation, your current internal debt service target is about a 1.5. The target for the plan is a 2.0. And we set the target for the funds on hand. So this year becomes the basis of the financial plan that we've developed. What does that mean for the typical, the typical utility bill? The typical utility bill, you know, will increase on a combined basis by about $13.98. And in, with the bill increasing, what does that mean for the services we provide? What does that mean for the services your customers will get? The cost is about a cent per gallon of water. The daily cost for water service is about $1.34. And, you know, for wastewater, you know, the daily cost is about $2.08. And when you turn on your pipe, you know, customers are able to shower and do everything we do, go through that entire process until, you know, that water goes back out as wastewater, and we get all that, all those services for those, you know, for that unit rate. Now, how does the water and wastewater bill compare to other neighboring utilities, for example? We, we went about, you know, surveying or benchmarking a few neighboring utilities. If I'm not mistaken, the range was like 100 to 125 miles in and around Clayton. And if we look at the existing Clayton bill, that's that bar, you know, in the, to the right of the middle. Clayton currently is somewhere, based on what was surveyed, you know, somewhat in the middle of the pack, maybe in the higher side of the middle, to be fair. And the proposed, the proposed bill, or what we're proposing, you know, will, you know, take that current bill, you know, a little bit higher comparatively speaking. Now, all these utilities are also considering, for the most part, as every utility typically does, they're also considering rate increases as well. So we don't know what that will be until it's tariffed, ordinance, and published, you know, somewhere down the road, depending on their budget year cycle. One of the key things we saw here, though, was if you look at all the green bars, which is representative of the sewer portion of the bill, we see that the sewer component is a significant portion of the bill. And as such, it just says that, you know, a lot of other utilities, a lot of other neighboring utilities, as we showed initially, are going through what you are currently going through. Okay? So, you know, what does that mean as it relates to, you know, the bigger perspective of what it is you're trying to do? We have objectives as it relates to infrastructure integrity, regulatory compliance, and all these other goals and objectives, you know, and we're able to meet them by continuing to build this financial stability, understanding and supporting those capital and operating to build this financial stability, understanding and supporting those capital and operating needs, and doing that by, most importantly, trying to mitigate the customer's bill as best as possible. So thank you very much for the opportunity, and we welcome the opportunity for questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you. This has been noted as a public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak. I'll close the public hearing and thank you both very much for the great work you have done for the town of Clayton.
Thank you.
Very much. All right. Anything else, Rich? If not, I'm going to call for a 10-minute recess.
Okay, well, let's just do it.
Glad to call our meeting back to order. Up next on the public hearing is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2022-23 budget.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Robert Mackay, Finance Director. In your packages tonight, you have a copy of the actual budget message for 2023. You have several budget reports for the general fund and the water sewer and electric fund, as well as the actual budget ordinance for 2023, the ordinance for the comprehensive list of fees, as well as the comprehensive list of fees itself. And then the budget presentation is in there as well. Tonight, I'm going to be doing the budget presentation. Well, I would like to point out that the rate model presentations that were given tonight were received after the agenda deadline, so we will be updating the comprehensive list of fees, as well as a minor adjustments in the budget message to align with those budget, with those rate model presentations. And those will be adopted. We're hoping that the budget gets adopted at the next council meeting on June 21st. By statute, we have to adopt the budget before June 30th, or by June 30th. All right, so let's dig into the budget presentation. So as you can see here, this is a summary that shows the general fund budget is $43.6 million. Water sewer fund is approximately $35.1 million, and the electric fund is just south of $20 million mark. All right, we're recommending five positions in the budget request for 2023, one position in inspections, a level three plan reviewer, and four police officers. The total cost of that, including benefits, is about $384,000 for the fiscal year. And as you can see, these positions are all budgeted to start 7-1 2022, but realistically, the actual start date will probably be after that. This next slide is just a breakdown of our underassigned fund balance. We have approximately unassigned fund balance of, we ended the year with, 2021, with the underassigned fund balance of $16.3 million, and we have, we're saying we're going to keep approximately 25% as our required amount, and that leaves us about $8.8 million that's available to appropriate in subsequent fiscal years. So on the bottom of that slide, you can see where I can say we've got about $8.8 million unassigned fund balance available, and I'm showing you what we've used so far. That leaves approximately $5.8 million left available to appropriate for the 2023 budget. And during the work session today, I informed council that we're actually appropriating about $5.2 million of that 5.8. All right, so our budget highlights, again, were balanced at $43.6 million in the general fund. That required a fund balance appropriation of 5.2 million, which was pretty much attributable to our capital outlay needs. The water sewer fund is balanced at 35.1, and that also, we re-appropriated the $4 million of ARPA funds we received in the current fiscal year. And as mentioned in the rate model presentation, we have a combined rate increase of 15.1% on the water sewer fund. The electric fund were balanced at 20 million, and we had to do a fund balance appropriation of 1.1. Again, 7% rate increase is required. That aligns with the rate model presentation, and as well as the new positions are mentioned there, four patrol officers and one plan reviewer, the cost of a little over $400,000. So our economic considerations are, the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, was at an all-time high of 8.5% in March compared to the previous year, and that's the highest since 1982, so basically 40 years. The next one is the Personal Consumption Expenditures Price Index. This index is the index that the Federal Reserve uses. This is what they march to their program with, and that was at a 40-year high of 6.6% in March. So their target inflation rate is 2%. So they're starting to ratchet up their increases to bring inflation back in line with their 2% threshold. And so what that's going to do is it's going to increase borrowing costs. Interest rates are going to start rising. Cost of capital is going to go up with the hopes that people are going to reduce their consumer spending because things are going to start becoming more costlier, mortgages, financing vehicles, so on and so forth. Also, the GDP growth, that fell 1% in Q1 of 2022. That was the first contraction since the onset of COVID, and most economists are projecting some sort of recession to occur in late calendar '23 or early '24. So our major revenue assumptions are, the tax rates remain at 58 cents per hundred-dollar valuation with a collection rate of 99%. Our actual collection rate is closer to 98, 99.8, but we're a little bit conservative in our budget with that. Our ADVOLARM taxes are projected to grow at 6.8% over our current level. Sales taxes are projected to increase 1.8 million compared to our FY 2022 budget, and they're going to be actually, we used a 5% growth rate for 2023 budget, so we're saying sales taxes are only 5% more than what we're projecting for the end of '22. On an actual basis, currently in FY '22, as of the end of the third quarter, March, we're running 20% higher than the prior year actual, as well as 20% higher than budget. But given with the economic conditions and the Fed's plans to ratchet up interest rates, we're being conservative in using that 5% projection. We don't want to over-project our sales tax revenues. We're also projecting our development revenue to remain steady, basically just flat. Some more budget assumptions are, we have a 5% pool for salary adjustments, and that's going to be included 2% COLA for all full-time and permanent part-time employees effective 7-1. The pay and classification study results that were currently being reviewed, those are targeted to be implemented effective October 1st, 2022. So any employees that are eligible for those, that would take effect then. Our state health plan, our employer contribution for that is budgeted at a 12% increase. That amounts to approximately $77 a month per employee over above what we're currently contributing. And the retirement fund contributions, those are mandated by statute, so there's nominal increases there, about 3/4% on the general fund for general employees and 1% for law enforcement officers. So this slide, here's what's new. We gave council a presentation back on May 2nd during a work session. So we did, we did a budget survey for the first time in the history of the town, and that was a success. I have a few slides coming up to show you with that. This is the first year where we're centralizing the budget for fuel, vehicles, and heavy equipment, except for the enterprise funds, water, sewer, and electric. We actually did a mission critical review and evaluation, was implemented to balance our budget and prioritize the CIP projects, and we, as I previously stated, we had to do a fund balance appropriation to cover some of our CIP needs. And we're also planning on doing a installment financing for rolling stock this year, our vehicle purchases and heavy equipment of about $1.5 million. That's the first time that we're doing a financing since fiscal year 2013. All right, so here we go. We got what's changed here. We got a higher assessed value since the last, we got, which equates to higher ADVOLARM revenues. We also updated our sales tax revenue projections for 3/4 of actual. We knew what the actual 3/4 of the numbers were. We updated our cost of services allocation. We went back and re-evaluate and prioritize the CIP. We updated our balance of budget adjustments. And lastly, we updated our fuel cost projection based upon the U.S. Energy Information Administration forecast, and we also added a little bit of cushion in there due to the uncertainty in the, in the energy market. All right, so here's the budget survey. We had a little over 1,200 people that responded, and believe it or not, that's the highest participation we've had in any town survey that's been conducted. As you can see, most of the people were within the town limits through ETJ. We asked people to rank, rank the eight items that are adjacent to the bar graph. We asked them to rate those items in order of importance. And as you can see, we have, public safety was number one, followed by transportation, infrastructure at number two, parks and rec was number three, and then economic stability and growth was at number four, filed by the other items, which are pretty close to each other. The next slide, this is what we asked taxpayers, or we asked the people who took the survey, what percentage of your tax dollars should go to these categories? And again, this, this file is pretty much in line with the previous slide. The people said approximately 20.4% should go to be spent on public safety, i.e. our police and fire, transportation, infrastructure, same 20.4%, so there's a kind of a tie there. That was filed by parks and recreation at 12.6%, and then economic stability and growth and environmental stability, they were tied 11.65, filed by the vibrant and accessible downtown at about 9.7. So that's kind of what people thought. So these next slides are kind of historical trends, like 10-year historical trends. The first one is our, is the general fund expenditure, the breakdown there. You can see it's between salaries, benefits, operating expenses, and contract services, programs, debt service, and capital outlay. What you can kind of see is, beginning in fiscal '21 and '22, you kind of see our operating costs started to ramp up, allow that with our salaries and benefits, had to do with the new positions we added in the current fiscal year, and that's filed by, you can also see the operating expenses and contract services starting to ramp up in the last two years, as well as our capital outlay. So if you look back to fiscal '18 and '19, you can kind of see the categories are relatively stable, they're about even, and then it starts to escalate up in fiscal '21 to where we're, we're currently at now. Here's a graph of our sales tax revenues, so you can see the actual history as well as our budget. You can look there that since 1920 fiscal year, sales taxes, this really taken off. We've been experiencing these large variances, positive variances of budget, which is a great thing, but we also know that's not going to continue forever. Here's the next slide is our ADVOLARM tax history. You can see that in terms of actual budget, we do a pretty good job budgeting. So our actuals in budget, there's really not a significant variance there. The next slide is utility sales tax growth. This is the shared revenue distribution like sales tax that comes off the excise taxes from the utility bills like gas, natural gas and electric. And that's basically kind of relatively flat the last three years. We're not projecting really any substantial growth there in the current upcoming year. Again, our building permit revenues, you can see the history there. So we're, again, we're projecting our development revenues to be relatively flat, basically the same level as, as current fiscal year. You can see our general fund debt service history. In the current fiscal year, that spike is attributable to, in the current fiscal year, back when we issued the GO bonds, we paid off the 2009 GO bond debt. Those coupon rates were 4% to 5%, and we felt that was a good investment of our money because we're currently earning, back at that point, we were earning less than a percent, less than a half percent. So we basically earned 5% by doing that on our money. So it kind of comes back down in 2022, '23, the normal level, where it would be at. This last slide is just basically showing your general fund debt to expenditures. So you can see our, our debt to expenditures is very low. And our final thoughts are, our FY '22 budget was a more efficient and effective use of our budget funds. There was a big focus on the completion of projects. We were able to make adjustments. As markets changed, our opportunities arose, and we also were able to increase our uniformity and our efficiency in processes and function. One thing to point out is the general fund budget is not sustainable with major fund balance appropriations moving forward, meaning that $5.2 million budget, the approach we did this year, we're not going to be able to continue to do that in the future. You know, growth is, will continue, and it's here pretty much to stay until we hit a recession of some sort. Revenues are not increasing at the same rate as growth impacts on service. So that means basically our, our costs are increasing at a higher rate than our revenues are. We recommend moving forward with revamping the CIP and performing our debt capacity and affordability analysis. We, we actually received the results of that today, and we'll be sharing that in the near future. And we continue to pursue opportunities, restructure, and achieve efficiencies in operations. Our water sewer and fund will continue to require rate increases to fund the reinvestment system. That was demonstrated in the rate model presentation. The same holds true for the electric fund. Electric fund, we've had several years where we've had no rate increases. Actually, we've had a couple of rate decreases that we've implemented. The town hasn't implemented any rate increases. And also, one thing I really want to point out, I think is important for, you know, not only for council, but our, our taxpayers, as well as the utility customers, is that the general fund, the water sewer fund and electric fund, they're three separate funds. Our, our residents that pay taxes do not subsidize water sewer fund or electric fund. Those funds, electric fund and water sewer fund are enterprise funds. They're considered a business, and they have to be self-supporting. So they're self-supporting through the fees and the rates that we charge for the services. There is no subsidy between the general fund, going back to those enterprise funds or vice versa. That's very important. There's no tax dollars that are being utilized to support those enterprise funds. Overall, the town continues to experience unprecedented growth, and that impacts all our components, operations. There's the uncertain economic conditions that we're currently under that creates a need for a more conservative approach to spending, and to remain in good financial health, we, we need to recommend and do some additional long-term planning to develop a roadmap for success, and that includes our debt strategy, our bond issuance opportunities, trying to leverage grant funding when it's feasible, developing any other funding sources that we can come across, and utilizing ADVOLARM tax rate when it's necessary. And so with that, that concludes the presentation. Does anybody have any questions? I'll be happy to address those.
Any questions or comments for staff? Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, you know, a few themes come out of this for me. One is, you know, that we put public safety first. You know, we had to, we've got to have more police officers, and we've got to have that position in inspections because inspections plays just as important a role in public safety. The fund balance is obviously coming down. I think we've had to, you know, we're looking at a pending recession, you know, unless something drastically changes. Another thing that comes out of it to me is that the revenue is not increasing at the rate of growth. So, you know, what that's telling me is that, that growth is not paying for itself. And so we have to be mindful of that, that, you know, a lot of people say, well, you're growing, you're growing, you're growing, you know, but the infrastructure, to maintain the infrastructure that we need to support it, it's not paying for itself. And I think that's something that this group has to be super mindful of. And the other thing that I see, you know, looking at this, as much as, obviously, none of us ever wanted to raise taxes, but we've got to pay for what we provide, and then we've got to pay for our people. So I kind of, the theme coming out of this for me is it looks like tax increase is inevitable, it's just a matter of when. And it's a matter of, do we, do we hold off now and give everybody a big hit in a year or so of 5% or whatever, you know, that's going to be? Do we need to be looking at smaller incremental increases that affect people less on the front side so that you don't suddenly get hit with a huge increase in a year? You know, for me, I would like to see some sort of, you know, to come back to us, you know, informally, or some, you know, get a message to us of what it would look like, what the, the impact would be if we were to increase, do an ADVOLARM increase of, say, a half a cent, one cent, you know, look at, you know, some sort of a, what that would look like to us, because I think we need to be mindful for the taxpayers that, you know, we need to hear from them too, you know, do you, would you rather absorb slight increases in a gradual manner, or had you rather have a, a big hit, you know, followed by another big hit? You know, what, what's the best thing that we can do for our taxpayers? And so I think that's something that I'd like to say.
We can certainly prepare something like that. I also think it, since you brought up that topic, I think it would be good for you, for council, to see the results of the recent debt capacity affordability analysis. You know, you've taken this into consideration. I think, you know, that's, that's going to directly tie into what you're talking about right now, and I think that, that'd probably be very helpful in what you're proposing.
Thank you, Robert. That's all. I just wanted that, you know, for the benefit of our citizens to know that we recognize that we're in a society where everything is costing more. You know, our gas is costing more, our food's costing more. Everything that we do costs more, we as the government aren't immune from that. Everything that we're having to provide is costing more as well. And so we, you know, as much as you hate to say the word raise taxes, we, we can't keep at the same level forever and ever and ever. And, you know, I think we're going to have to face the inevitable at some point that we've got to, to continue to provide the service we provide, pay for it. And maybe we need to do some deeper analysis of the best methods to do that.
I agree with your assessment.
Thank you.
Ms. Archer?
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. That was right on. I agree. A lot of what you said resonated with me, and this is my first budget. I feel like there's been a lot to learn, and thank staff for the handholding and the sessions that we've had to kind of walk us through it. It's been really helpful. So I don't know, not an expert, I don't know much yet, but there are two things that I do know for sure, and one is the, we're in uncertain times, and I feel like we're heading into more uncertain times. And so when I saw that $5.2 million budget appropriation, and as you said, that's just not sustainable, I really think that ties in with what you were saying about looking at potential tax, ADVOLARM tax rate increases to see what that would look like. I know, me personally, I would prefer a stepped, a slow and steady approach rather than a jump, say, next year, some big, bigger jump all at once. I think for, for everyday citizens to kind of plan for something in a more gradual, gradual approach is always better if possible. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Anyone else? So this has been noted as a public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak. I'll close the public hearing. And thank staff and everyone for all the hard work and effort. And thank staff and everyone for all the hard work and effort that goes in to this budget. You know, I've been sitting in this seat for a long time and I can tell you it's never easy in hard economic times to have to look at rate increases on your citizens. And this day and time is no different than it has been in the past. And I am sure that this council is going to do their very best in due diligence to make sure that we are definitely looking after the best financials for our citizens as we can. Because, you know, maybe for me, a $10 increase in my water bill isn't a hit, but there are citizens in Clayton that that is a hit and we don't forget that and we don't take that lightly. But we're also here to be good stewards of management of this town and the business operations. And I think we're going to continue to do what we've, what we've always done in that regard, making sure our citizens are getting the best bang for their buck. All right, anyone else? If not, I'm going to move on to the next item. Next, under new business is the selection of a consultant firm for the town manager recruitment. So today, this council had an opportunity to get together and have some further discussion around all of this topic. And I'm going to give the floor over to Mayor Protim for a little bit of a synopsis on what's been discussed and what the current plan of action is going to be moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Prior discussion and, you know, regarding personnel in our closed session, the, the consensus of the group is that we're not being good stewards of the taxpayer dollar if we spend an exorbitant amount of money for a headhunter or a search firm at this point. Because what we have the advantage of now, I think more so than we've ever had before, is a very strong human resource department, you know, an entire team that's able to, you know, craft these things, you know, job descriptions and advertisements and, and such. So, you know, it is the consensus of the group that, you know, for the public's benefit, that we're going to rely on our, our internal team to put together the advertisement, to reach out to the appropriate places such as, you know, league municipalities, Triangle J Council of Governments, all of our partner organizations and get this message to them, the advertisement to them, put together the process and timelines with regard to how we're going to move forward to hire the manager. Now, the decision is obviously going to be ours regardless of how this plays out. If we used an outside headhunter firm or what, the, the goal is to develop a process that we can follow, that will maintain the, we can have, maintain the integrity of that and it can also be used in the future. And I just don't see at this point spending between $20,000 and $30,000 for somebody to put together a job description and put that out in an advertisement, a newspaper advertisement. I just don't see that as the best use of taxpayer dollars at this point. And the rest of this group concurred with that today in our meeting. So for the public's benefit, we just want to let, let you guys know that, you know, let the public know that we're not going to proceed forward with a hiring an outside firm. We will use our internal resources and our partner organizations to help us facilitate this process. And there will be a process. This doesn't mean there's not going to be a process. There will be a process and we will select the, you know, the best candidates to fill, you know, the, the best candidates narrow it down and then we'll make an ultimate selection on our final choice. So, did I miss anything?
I think that's perfect.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Questions or comments? All right. Thank you. Now we're going to move on to staff reports, starting with the town manager.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go down because I do have a presentation with an update about the water reclamation facility. Mayor and council, I believe you've been involved in a lot of conversations this evening regarding funding and expenditures in general. One of those that has been the highlight of the show here for the last few years has been the, what is now the Sam's Branch Water Reclamation Facility, the replacement of our aging infrastructure, which is the Little Creek Water Reclamation Facility. We've been on a path here for a few years, trying to get this project out of the ground. We did have a groundbreaking earlier this year after the early packages were let to begin making progress on the site as we worked toward getting a GMP or guaranteed maximum price from the design builder. Since then, we've got some additional, additional information that we want to go ahead and update you and the public on regarding the status of the project. So a little bit of history here, going back to the original estimates done back in October of 2020, where the total program cost was estimated a little over $100 million. I believe it was $105 million at the time. Since then, we've had several updates to the project as the design has advanced, as well as the economy has changed. We have gotten updates for all elements of the project. And just as a reminder, the bulk of the project is that water reclamation facility out there on the Neuse River. But there are two other components. There's a major pump station conversion and pipeline converting Little Creek Water Reclamation Facility into a pump station and pushing the flow back over to where the Sam's Branch Water Reclamation Facility will be, as well as a second pipeline project, pump station and pipeline project where the East Clayton industrial area is currently to expand that pump station and again reroute those flows to the new Sam's Branch. Over the course of the, of the few, few years that are indicated here on the graph, we have seen the costs of the water reclamation facility itself exponentially increase, unfortunately. You can see there that June of 2021 at a 30% estimate design, the total program cost was approximately $170 million, $175 million, excuse me. Since then, in December, which was the latest numbers that we had been working off of regarding our funding package, the total for that was just, just over $200 million, approximately $210 million is what we were carrying for anticipated total program costs. We worked very diligently to ensure that we had funding in place to be able to cover that cost as we were expecting to get the guaranteed maximum price sometime in late April, early May, based on what those, those estimates were there in December. Unfortunately, the offering that came in at the end of April was significantly more than what we had been in, had been indicated back in December. It was $50 million more than anticipated, which brought our total program cost to approximately $260 million, as you can see on that far right graph. As such, the design team, excuse me, the, the internal team that's been managing the project, as well as our owners advisors reviewed the proposal. There were some concerns that we had with regard to the terms in it, which really didn't put a hard cap on that guaranteed maximum price. So it did have potential to go beyond what was offered as $204 million. So since then, we have indicated to the design build team that, that we were rejecting that offer and have directed them to move forward with finalizing the design so that it can be put out to bid in a formal design bid build package later this summer. Right now, we are projecting to have bids in hand from other third-party general contractors somewhere in the August timeframe that will align with our ability to potentially secure or finalize the debt funding that we had secured with, with one of the banks, as well as get approval from the local government commission. As you know, any debt that we take on as an entity, we are required to get their permission and their approval. And we've had some conversations with them about how that timeline could, could work out. So a couple of things I want to highlight along, this is a bit of a timeline with kind of how we've gotten to where we are. Back in, I guess, early 2020, the town did, excuse me, late 2019, the town did a business case analysis to determine that we had to move forward with a replacement of the Little Creek facility, as well as making the decision to go design build because that was going to meet the schedule. Again, our schedule is primarily driven by both the county and their plant coming online sometime in early 2025 as currently indicated, as well as the expiration of our agreement with the city of Raleigh that expires in 2027. Those two instances make it so, so that we have to be able to maintain, or excuse me, treat the entirety of the flow that has historically been sent both to the county and to, to the city of Raleigh respectively. We designed, the basis of design back in October of 2022. At the time, the estimate for that project was approximately $72 million for this component of it. Moved forward with obtaining the design builder, that estimate at the 30% design for the project itself was $129 million. Moving forward, the 60% design back in December brought that to approximately $154 million. And as such, the latest design with the guaranteed maximum price, which does include risk and contingency, was north of $200 million. How did we get to this point? A few things have occurred over that time. We've had a COVID pandemic that occurred after we embarked on the path of moving forward with the design build project. Construction materials in market, you know, there was a bit of a lag in that. But once it started getting realized, it really started to accelerate the impacts, excuse me, the, the supply chain as well as demand impacts, starting to impact the markets for basically anything and everything you, you require to, to, to build or construct something these days. That cost escalation began to ram up, ramp up in 2021. One specific data point, steel prices in April of 2021, or excuse me, a little after June, we reviewed the steel prices from April of 2021 till then, steel prices alone had gone up 100%. That's just one, one specific data point along our line. Additionally, there was an infusion of cash from, into the public market from the federal acts that basically earmarked money specifically for projects like ours. A great windfall for many, many, many communities that were in need. However, what that did was put a lot of dollars out there and create a lot more demand in the sector that we are really basically trying to, to utilize for, for delivering our project. And on top of that, from December to May, when we got the GMP, Russian invasion of Ukraine put significant impact on things like global metal, or metals within the global market. And I've got some slides here shortly that'll, that'll explain that a little bit more and how that impacts us and our project. Unfortunately, what this slide basically tells us is a lot of the things that could have gone wrong did go wrong unfortunately over the path of the last year and a half. However, we have done everything we could to adjust as those impacts were being come, are becoming realized. We, we made the necessary changes to the scope of the project. We did things like purchasing pipe and, and other equipment to lock in pricing before the escalation got beyond what we felt we, we could handle. But unfortunately, these, these forces were acting against us and have compounded to, to create that increase in the costs. It's a little difficult to see the bottom of the slide there, it's just off the screen. Apologize, but basically that shows what CPI was kind of year over year. Very similar to the presentations you've heard earlier today regarding the budget overall, 8% CPI just in the last year. Prior to that, we were in four to 6% for the previous year. So you can see where the cost of everything has been, been going up through that timeline. So a few specifics with the inflation impacts. Here's a couple of different things that kind of fold into the, the overall project as well as just, you know, what, what are, what all of us Americans are facing these days. The cost of everything from food to gasoline to, to clothes on our back has, has gone up significantly year over year. That middle part with energy, both gasoline, electric, national gas, these are all things that in some way, shape or form touch all of the different components of our project. So again, these are all these forces working to compound to create the current market that we're in. Just as a graphic here to, to show you, you can see the CPI from 2016 to 2021 relative, or excuse me, to 2020 relatively flat or standard, you know, that kind of two, three, you know, one to two, three percent maximum kind of CPI that we've seen over the last several years. That purple line is the 2021 where things really started to escalate. And now here we are at the blue line in the top left through that first quarter of 2022 with escalation, excuse me, with inflation upwards of 8%. So the average annual CPI, as you can see, just a little bit different form of showing it, but significant impacts just here, particularly over the, the project period where we are looking to kind of buy out, or where we ultimately were looking to buy out or lock in the pricing for the project. Material impacts is another one, just from the association of general contracting. You can see here the overall cost of non-residential construction from 20, September of 2020 to January 2022, upwards of 21% increase over that period. Again, that's just September of 22 to now, or to earlier this year. Unfortunately, that red line does appear as though it probably continues on the upward trend that you see on the right side there. The cost of everything, again, those are some of the indices, you know, diesel fuel, 237% increase, things like lumber, copper, aluminum, all these things that we have some form or fashion in our project. Unfortunately, the, the graphs tell the tale where we're at. Current material costs, information from the engineering news record. This is a cost index that's used throughout the industry. You can see there just kind of generally what some of those cost increases year to date have been, March, March to March, kind of over the last year, 20% in Dallas, 32% in New Orleans, 67% in San Francisco. So while we are probably more at the year-to-date averages here in Raleigh, there are big concerns, big, big pressures being put throughout the industry and throughout the country. Some, some more of the Bureau of Labor Statistics data. Again, many of those items that you see on that graph right there that are up 74%, 50%, those are all things that we have a significant amount of either material or equipment that utilizes those pieces of equipment. PVC pipe being one, one item that we could have used or that we looked to use on, on the project as a cost savings opportunity. Unfortunately, those markets are just as, the demand for those markets are just as high as they are for the other material piping that we've, that we have optional, or we have looked at. Just one more graphic to just show the year view change in material costs versus the bid prices. You can see that, that very high spike there all the way to the right. That, that was kind of February of 2022 over the last 15 months. Unfortunately, when we went to bid out the final packages here for the wastewater treatment plant, it was in that February to March timeframe. So the, the costs of those, the, those construction costs unfortunately are, are continuing to escalate. So some of the supply chain issues that are, are continuing to plague us, pre-engineered metal buildings. That was one of the changes that we made early on in the project because it was going to impact the schedule. We changed from pre-engineered metal buildings to actually stick-built or block-built buildings. That was a time-saving as well as at the time, well, primarily it was time-saving and time was going to save money. Now it's not only time, but it's also likely cost equality. Roofing materials, we've got plant shuts down, shutdowns that are impacting the overall supply chain. Still seeing some, some lingering effects of the Texas freeze that really impacted a lot of the resins, a lot of the plastics. The PVC pipe industry, for instance, that continues to lag for that, the shutdowns that occurred in that, that sector. As well as even the Suez Canal, you know, that was a while back that, but that six-day blockage really did impact overall shipping lanes and deliveries and ports in general. So the price index for PVC, for instance, has skyrocketed 70%. The price for epoxy resins and those used for coatings and adhesives are up over 170%. We do have piping in this plant that would require some of those epoxies and, or, and some of those liners. So again, costs going up. Companies were scrambling at one point, or currently are, to acquire many of the raw materials to keep up with the demand. There's been some of that panic buying that has driven up that cost. So again, at this point, we are, we are looking to see if some of that can stabilize over the next several months to help bring the costs down or at least stabilize so that we have a better idea of where the market will be for the project. So the bidding environment, again, drastic shortening of the producers and, and is impacting the holds on the prices that they're willing to put. Many, many are going to monthly price increases. Basically, right now, we are having quotes that come in with literally signed down dotted line right now, or we can't hold this price for a day, five days, a week. That's just kind of the markets that we're in. Price increase on steel is coming the day after the increase took effect even. That's usually, there's usually a little bit of a lag. Another element, you know, there is the infrastructure bill. We've been, we've been tracking all the, the opportunities and also the impacts of that. There's a lot of money in that bill that can help pay the way or, or pay for many of the projects like we are doing right now. Challenge there ends up being that, that just drives more demand in a sector that is already very, very overweight or very stressed. Not overweight. So again, net percent for 2022 value of projects. This is just some of the estimates on how much higher or lower some of those projects will come in. Most, most folks obviously feel like water and sewer projects were going to come in higher, about 50%. But I mean, about 50%, but that means 50% maybe feel like it might be the same or lower. The Russian involvement in Ukraine, again, material price index, 9%, 9.8% higher than what it was in May of 2021. Many of the precious metals, many of the specific, or metals specifically that we need, for instance, iron, you know, used in steel and castings. You can see there in the middle, Russia exports 25%, Ukraine 20%. If there's any of that material in your projects, you're going to see that increase. But then, you know, up and down that list there of much of the equipment or materials that may, that have impacts on our project. You can see down there, year-over-change, things like transformers, 40%. That leads to kind of the story we were telling earlier with regards to our electric utility. We install a lot of transformers every year, and we are seeing that, that increase readily just in our day-to-day operations. So supply chains, you can see there, just a quick graph, what the expected markets are looking like moving forward. Pumps and compressors, fans and blowers, again, these are all the parts and components that make up our project. Fuels and metals, unfortunately, you can see that high spike there on the far right of the left graph for the fuel price index. Robert mentioned earlier in our budget presentation for FY23 that we've had to take some precautions within that budget to ensure that we can, we can weather the storm with regards to whatever that, that total fuel cost ends up being, because we've got to keep our operations running. Those fuel costs are impacting our project as well. So with that, with regards to our timeline on the project, as of right now, we are negotiating with the design builder to finish up the projects or the elements of the project that were under active construction, as well as a few other buyouts of different contracts or material or equipment purchases. Our intent is to have a meeting later this week that's currently advertised on the IPS website for the state to get some contract, to put the word out that we intend to fully bid the project later this summer, get some interest in some larger general contractors that may be willing to bid on it, to hopefully get some additional competition. And then ultimately, the timeline for the bid would be sometime in, I believe, early August at this point, for us to have bids in hand for the fully-designed plant that the current designers are finishing up, and with the intent to have everything locked in, funding in place, and approval from LGC later this fall with a kind of restart out there at the site, once the current packages are finished up for just, just after the first of the year, 2023. So with that, any questions?
Questions or comments for staff? All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any report with town attorney?
No.
Town clerk?
No report.
Good evening, Patrick Pierce, economic development director. I will make this one quick. We, you all selected and have supported the Sculpture Trail, which is fantastic, and Sarah Pericon is here. We've had an opportunity, there's Valkyrie, and I've got these, one of each of these, which I'm happy to share with you, which is one of the art pieces that's in Horn Square currently. The artist, Jack Howard Potter, has given the town an additional year on our contract there at no charge, just us with the insurance. As part of that, and I think as part of the plan, Sarah had approached me and said that there's an effort to purchase this sculpture, which is fantastic. That price was normally $25,000, that's been brought to $20,000. They've already raised a little bit of money in the community and are working with the Downtown Development Association to do a campaign for sponsorship with businesses and looking to really fill that gap. As part of that, the, they've asked if the town would be willing to contribute towards this in a figure of $7,000. So that would take it to an $11,000 gap that they would be trying to close with the community to be able to purchase this. So I wanted to give you an update on that. I did want to mention Jack Howard Potter, the artist. Last year, he finished a 30-foot sculpture at the NFL Hall of Fame out in front there. So it's a really cool piece that we have, something right here in Clayton, that's something that's an artist that's good enough for an international franchise to be able to select that artist, and we've got that piece here. So wanted to present that here, get that on your radar. I think our hope would be, and in kind of conveying this and bringing this forward, would be get some, get kind of verbal go-forward and kind of commitment here, and then once that money is raised, be able to actually finalize that. We should have some additional facade grant money that will be left over from this year's budget, that should be about that amount of $7,000, so that would hopefully close that gap going forward and be able to use, utilize those for something that is another great asset to our downtown in addition to facade. So happy to share this with you, this sponsorship guide here, but wanted to make that ask in front of all you tonight. So thank you for giving us a couple of minutes to do that. And Sarah, I'd know, love to answer any questions you have as myself. Thank you.
I would just say that that's probably one of the, it's probably one of the best sculpture pieces we've had since we began the Sculpture Trail. And to have an artist who is a sculptor, who is so up and coming, would be a huge asset for the town of Clayton. And if there is funding left that we could transfer over towards this goal, I would be in favor of that. Mr. Thompson?
I agree. You know, I think we've been painted all night long a bleak financial picture of costs going up on everything and, you know, asking citizens to pay more for what they get. So my feeling is that if we have the money in the budget that can be allocated towards it, then I would support it. But I don't know that I would support additional funding that's not already in the budget for it.
Makes sense. Ms. Sam?
Yes, so I'm in favor of it, especially if you're saying that we already have funds that are allocated, just as Councilman Thompson says that there's funds already, he said that was in the facade grant?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm for it.
Anyone else?
I would say definitely in favor of it too, and I'd want to thank Ms. Pericon for bringing that to our attention, and I think it's a, it'd be a great permanent addition to our beautiful downtown.
I think this is a great way that we can honestly connect with our community in different ways. I think this is a great idea, so absolutely.
Ms. Archer?
I agree with everything everyone said here. I also really appreciate the fact that approximately two-thirds of the funds would be raised by private citizens, which I think is an awesome partnership with you and the DDA, so that's great, and especially the fact that we have money available that was meant to beautify downtown and beautify our town. And that's a big attraction here is the Sculpture Trail, so I'm happy to support that as well.
Very good. And I'd like to take a second to thank Sarah too for being very persistent and making sure that this always stays at the front of my radar. So she does a very good job of making sure that, advocating for the Sculpture Trail in downtown, and I couldn't thank her enough for all the work she does, so thank you, Sarah.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I did want to say while we're talking about it, that, you know, when, when I do have friends and people I know who ask about the great things about Clayton and unique things about Clayton, I can always point to the Sculpture Trail, and everybody says, you know, wow, that is unique and neat, and then they come back and say, hey, guess what? I did that. I went to all these sculptors and saw them, and that is one thing that, that I can say the sculpture program has brought a lot of enjoyment to citizens and has brought a lot of culture and awareness, because, you know, the mayor taught us a long time ago, I know me as a young councilman, you know, you get a sculpture, and I think, well, that's kind of ugly, or I don't know what I think about that. And he says, hey, if it's causing conversation, that's the purpose of art, is to bring up that conversation. And so every sculptor is not going to be everybody's cup of tea, but if it's causing them to talk about it, then it's doing its job. So thank you for it and all your work on it, Sarah. It's really something that, you know, when I do get to brag about Clayton and the great things, that's always one of the things I brag about.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Council. Sam Saleem here from Clayton, North Carolina. First of all, I wanted to thank you all for this long journey that we've had with the Guntry Lane project. I know you voted on it. I think the vote was 80% where we wanted to get to, and it took a lot of work and time and due diligence from all of you, you guys too, so I appreciate that. Timothy and Robert couldn't be here tonight to see, to see this. Timothy's dad is very sick, but I wanted to just share one thing about the recognition that they've spent their life trying to acknowledge and find their ancestors that didn't leave the state of North Carolina, didn't leave old Birdie County or ancient Johnston County. And they're the ones that lived up and down the ridge and the slopes of the tributaries. And according to a lot of sources, that's what we found. So along with this decision that was made tonight, I just wanted to explore what kind of path would be best used to make sure that the two saddle trees are acknowledged, maybe via a plaque, a plaque of sorts, and also the unmarked burials that may be just outside that 50-foot buffer that I think was described, because I think the nine mounds may be within it and maybe just outside of it, I'm not sure, I haven't measured them. But are those things that maybe we could explore directly with the developer, or with you and the developer, or what, how best should we proceed with that part of it? So, so basically, the, some recognition as being Tuscarora and via a plaque, and then making sure that the burial mounds are somehow identified and not bulldozed through whatever process that needs to be pursued. And, and then just the right for them to visit that sacred site. So I think that's, that's where we are with this, and like I said, it's taken several months, but it's, it's, it's worked for the better for all, I think. So, so I'd like to hear, or maybe redirect it, on how to pursue making that work.
Well, I don't know that we have the complete and total answer for you this evening, but we can certainly take that under advisement. But I think for sure, anything that would be done along those lines would be supported by the town of Clayton. We would be in favor of seeing that happen. But I think for sure you have to now work with the developer, as they are the property owner, and they have received permission to construct and build and develop what they want to.
And my thanks also goes to-
But I think to Jason's point, it's also partnership with Johnston County Heritage, it's a partnership with Tuscarora Nation, it's like everybody is partnership. Yes, and I'm pretty sure, once you can get something like that developed, if you bring that proposal to the town of Clayton, then the town of Clayton could see what we could do to be a part of that.
Wonderful, because we've got some players now that are looking at what potential revenue, I think one of the presenters with the tax slide, you know, possible tax rate, tax hikes or whatever, looking at additional revenue streams. They are completely willing to, and they want me to report back to them maybe in 24 hours to score elders as to how this all went. But the chief has said, Sam, if we did a little festival where people came and did little, you know, like in, in the middle of Clayton, maybe taught kids how to dance and did their cultural awareness type stuff, and that even cook and all the proceeds would go to the town, they'd just give it away as gratitude, just for acknowledging and recognizing. And they have found Tuscarora Lane near here, so, you know, the history is here, and they just want the recognition for it. So that's all, and so thanks again for everything.
Thank you, Sam.
I'm David Cawthorn from Horseshoe Lane in the Horsemen's Ridge subdivision. Addressed you guys a couple of times before, I just want to point out a couple of things. One of them is the developer has been disingenuous with the honor for you on a few of the items. I'm not going to try to drag them across the dirt, but, you know, the only thing they've really recognized is that these trees are trees. They're bent trees, and they were used for pointing in a direction by Native Americans. They haven't recognized burial mounds, they haven't recognized any of the artifacts that we've found, none of that. And the point I'm trying to make is that the discoveries have been made by inexperienced, untrained individuals who just happened on them in the woods. There needs to be a comprehensive archaeological study done out there, because there is way more to be found by people who knows what, know what they're looking for. We even got a letter today, we have obvious spearhead, you know, triangle-shaped rock with chips out of it, that the guy said, that's not a, that's just a normal rock formation. You've got to be kidding me. It's absolutely not. So there's a lot more to be done. I know that it's out of the purview of the town now that you voted, so it's between us and the developer and us and the federal government and whoever else, the county, but we're going to continue to pursue this to make sure that land is, gets discovered. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If not, I'll turn it over to council for comments. All right, and being done, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Good night.